Okay, we actually, we have six speakers signed up today. I'm just gonna read all the names and you can line up on the corner. Donald Harland, Nury Duarte Hernandez, Shanika Figueroa, Harriet Elliott, Candido, and Joe. If your name has been called, you can line up on the left side of the room, house left, stage right, and come forward. Let us know your name and what you were signed up to speak on.
Hi, Joe, just public comment.
Okay, you'll have one minute.
Okay, Madam Padilla, I just want to say you have a superstar in your office called Brian Patton. Unfortunately, Mr. Patton had to go through a lot of hoopla's to get me my Braille, in which I am visually impaired. Department of Labor Empowerment refuses to continuously provide me Braille. Their attitude is, "We don't care, what are you gonna do about it?" I'm entitled to Braille. Padilla's office had to really press. They're treating this deputy, Brian Patton, pretty poorly at Department of Labor Empowerment. I'm entitled to Braille. I have it right here, City Clerk, they checked my credentials, I'm visually impaired. Why is the department denying me the right to Braille? Why, why, why? Why do I need to beg? But Padilla's office did their best so far and they're fighting the fight for me and I thank you for that. Shame on Department of Labor Empowerment, fuck them.
Okay, next speaker.
Okay, you'll have one minute.
I'm talking about Renee Pittman. She's my soul sister. She is very religious as I'm gonna read right now, but in every other way she's exactly like me. Shocking. Okay, she's talking about, "God wants us to give the ultimate blessing that we desperately need and seek resulting from blind faith and trust." She's a big believer. However, she was abused as a child by the CIA, and it's making it clear right in the beginning on page 14. I don't know if you know about Carol Ruttz, who wrote Nation Betrayed. That book is not available. The CIA doesn't want to be tagged with the pedophilia that it was involved in. And also, I heard that the McMartin preschool case was one of them. Anyway, here is her talking.
Okay, thank you very much.
My name is Mistress Shanika Figueroa, and can you tell me which items I'm allowed to speak right now?
Item six through nine.
Oh, but for the 11, are you gonna call my name again?
The special meeting will be held later.
Oh, so, okay, I will, I'll come back again. Okay, so let's speak on everything and a general public comment.
You'll have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
And then for the item number six, what I read, it is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. So I actually disagree with this because we are having so many exemptions from the California Air Quality, California Environmental Quality Act. Right now, I'm seeing on the street so many trucks, so many cars, so many motorcycles, so many electric vehicles are having those big, black smoke, but it is damaging environment? I'm breathing in every single day because all of those are exempt, because we have no enforcement of those. For a person who live on the street, I have to breathing in of all those disgusting exhaust because of those exempt. So many store owners, business owners, they can get whatever luxury exemption from the city, from the state, and continue to damage the air quality.
Speaker, you should move on to your next item.
And then, next item, let's talk about item number eight, which is a similar item, which is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. I will continue to this. Since I arrived this country illegally in 1776, the air quality of the city of Los Angeles is continued to go down, like downhill, go down like a Figueroa. People are not only using those illegal exhaust, people are urinate on the street, that damaging the environment, people are defecate on the street, are damaging the environment, and the people are no longer use toilet anymore, that is damaging the environment. All of those are exempt from this so-called California Environmental Quality Act. I don't understand why we continue to allow such thing to continue.
Speaker, you should move on to your-
And then, I will move on to my general public comment today, and then-
You'll have one minute.
I want to, I would like to, talking about the civil rights and the equality today. One of my mentors, which is Officer Singh, he told, I was hopeless. I was hopeless being a man of my three inches. Everybody knows that. But Officer Singh told me, there's something called a civil rights in city of Los Angeles. There's something called equality in Los Angeles. I was hopeless because I was continued to be bullied at school, in the city, in the county, or anywhere I go. But Officer Singh told me that the civil rights protect everybody. Sometimes you have 12 inches in your upper body, so you are 12 inches taller than me. Sometimes I have 12 inches in my lower body, so that's why I'm 12 inches longer than you. But everybody are created equal. LAPD, city attorney, no matter who, how long you are, how tall you are, and everybody should be protected. Nobody should-
Okay, next speaker.
Speaker, please remind us of the name you signed up under and which items you'd like to speak to.
Hi, I'm Donald Harland. I'd like to speak on all the agenda items and general comment, please.
You'll have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Okay, starting with agenda item number nine, definitely no. I'm concerned that the people working in the city, in the city hall, and in the government are taking bribes from pharmaceutical companies like Purdue Pharma. It may look like a closed session meeting for a settlement, and maybe it's a legitimate settlement, but this seems to be a problem. There needs to be an investigation to find evidence if anybody's taking bribe from any pharmacies. Also, agenda item number eight is very important. Somebody in the port of Long Beach, in the port of Los Angeles is trying to collect clean truck funds, collect fees out of my port that's not supposed to, and that needs to be stopped right here. Sequois doesn't own the port. You know, the United States government doesn't own any transportation infrastructure whatsoever. The city doesn't own any transportation infrastructure. The state of California doesn't own any transportation infrastructure, including the ports. And there should be nobody showing up from the port of Long Beach, trying to make a bunch of fees, trying to steal a bunch of money out of the ports. So agenda item number eight, probably no. Also, there's a lot of quit claims that need to be canceled. You have to actually own the property to have a quit claim, and those people don't have, own that property. It's like people trying to claim the walkway next to their house or something, because it's next to their house. Well, you have to actually own the house, it actually has to be your property to do that, and these quit claim deeds don't count for shit. Okay, also, the Department of Transportation, LADOT, needs to be brought under control. There's a big breach over there, those guys driving the buses around there. They need to restore fares and get that back under control. Also, the LA, Los Angeles Housing Department is not a government agency.
Speaker, item one has already been voted on.
They're not to be, okay, they're not to be paid anything. It seems to me that there's a big problem, people with delinquent bills for things, they tried to bill to the city that they did that was illegal. A lot of bills in the name of the city by city employees not able to be collected, that they tried to spend my city money that they'll never get. Those people have to go to jail for that. Everybody that endorsed that, everybody they hired, everybody that worked in there, even the guys driving the supplies there.
Speaker, which I'd like to, which items would you like to speak to?
All the motherfucking items and general public comment.
You'll have three minutes for the items and one minute for public comment.
Right, let's get to number six, CD 11, the evil one with the coffee cup Tracy Park, that's right, look at that, that's right, back to evil. I want to see more evil out of her, she's coming back to us. Now, let's see, what you doing? Vacating Federal Avenue to Pico? Oh yeah, that's a homeless criminal area. See Bob? See what she does, Bob? Eunice's, see what she does? See how she protects people from homeless criminals? You don't, you're sitting there talking and ignoring the fucking shit that I'm trying to say.
Speaker, you need to address the council and speak to the agenda items.
See, Marquis Lee's listening, because he knows it's gonna go to the FBI, he's gonna be the next one.
Speaker, you need to stick to the agenda items.
If you give me a chance to talk in the fucking item, I can. You gonna give me a chance to talk in the fucking item, or you gonna filibuster me?
Tick tock, tick tock.
Well, sure. Tick tock, tick tock is right. Who's the next councilman that gets indicted, right? That's tick tock. So number seven, the, oh, shame on Hugo Stalin. Shame on Stalin, look at this. Selling out to Israel on this item? Dolby Theater? Should tear it down. Tear it down. Put a homeless project there. The Dolby, have you been to that piece of shit Dolby Theater? The little tiny cramped fucking seats in that piece of shit? It's too small. Piece of shit. It used to be called the Kodak Theater, and then Kodak went bankrupt, right? Like the city goes bankrupt, same thing. Piece of shit. And what is this, Hollywood Entertainment LLC? Who owns it? Who the fuck owns that? BlackRock owns part of that, right? That's Wall Street. Hugo selling out to Wall Street, put a bark coat on his ass, scan him, because now he's owned by the same pieces of shit that everybody else is. Then we get to number eight, oh bucket head. Look at that. Clean trucks. There's no such thing as a clean truck. Are you fucking retarded? You can't have a clean truck. Trucks have to have diesel motors. Because if they don't have diesel motors, and your lithium batteries blow up, then the truck blocks all the lanes and all your shipping stops. How you gonna tow it out of there? Another dumb old bucket head. Yep, see, you make Busquayano look like a Rhodes Scholar, I swear to God. I mean, even Marquis Lee, see, he's bowing his head, because he had to, he had to argue with you Tuesday that you know the procedures. You don't know a fucking thing. He knows more than you do, and he's dumb.
Speaker, your topic.
He fucking dumb. So anyway, go back to diesel, clean diesel. Clean diesel, non-sophoric diesel is the way to go. Now that my general, looks like we got a scandal here, looks like Bob and Imelda hiding city services from Encino, creating paths for fucking robberies and thefts. Just caught a guy with a black plastic bag running up Liba Avenue, right next to fucking freeway over there in Magnolia, and I called the cops. Trespassed, all those 18 burglaries in the area, and you know what they told me? "It's not a criminal matter. Did you see him break a lock? No, he only crawled over the wall with a skateboard filled with tattoos and a big, large bag." Who got broke into today? And it's her fault right over there, no streetlights, all the way around the Sepulveda Basin so the criminals can get away and turn their streetlights off, and the airships can't detect the robbery suspects and they leave Encino. She's responsible. I call on Tracy Park to turn them into the bed!
Okay, that concludes in-person public comment. We are now going to hear public comment from the phones. If we could go to the phones to hear from the public.
All right, I'll just speak to general comment.
You'll have one minute.
All right, so, I didn't get much time to talk about this this week because of all your other stuff this week, but let's talk about the whole incident that happened last weekend where a cop punched LAPD officer, punched someone in the face. So the LAPD's been refusing to identify this officer like all week, who just ran, punched someone in the face who wasn't resisting. So the press found it out finally, because the LAPD keeps refusing to release the name, let every, admit who the name officer is. So we're finding out some stuff about this officer. Like apparently when this officer was in the military, the officer microwaved live animals and would, you know, text each other, bully black Marines, all kinds of stuff. He'd like, he'd get his friends with microwave live rabbits, tarantulas. That, that to the LAPD employees and their police-
Yes, my name is Jason, I'm a Smoker Scan viewer.
Which items would you like to speak to?
Um, all available items and general public comment, ma'am.
Okay, you'll have three minutes for the items, that's items six through nine, and one minute for general public comment.
Thank you, ma'am, you're looking pretty good in your black mask, can we switch it up to maybe a white one every now and then? Anyway, um, questions, can we get like, somewhere in the city or maybe down the road, we can get, um, maybe some locksmiths, like down on Figueroa? The other day I was down on Figueroa with this chick.
Speaker, you need to speak to the agenda items.
Yes, ma'am. Well, I can't talk about Figueroa? That's not on the agenda?
That's not on the agenda.
Pretty little lady? Well then, let me, let me, well, then I, can I talk about, you know, Figueroa and, you know, the issues I was having down there?
Speaker, we can move you to general public comment.
Well, whatever you want to do, pretty little lady, it's your world, I'm just begging for mercy.
Let's move the speaker to general public comment.
Thank you, ma'am. Cool, anyway, as I said, I was down on Figueroa the other day, picked up a little chick, we went behind like the circle chair whatever there, and you know, she was in my front seat giving me the, you know, the, um, the foothold maneuver there, and I don't know, she was bent over and when she sat back down, I don't know how this happened, but she sat on my key fob and it went right up her ass. So yeah, I locked my keys in the bitch. So I was thinking if we could get maybe some locksmiths down on Figueroa, that way they'd be come over and use that little, that little metal stick that be bending and stuff to get the, um, open your doors or whatever, she could maybe fish it out of there and get my keys, because you know, it's hard when you don't have your damn keys and you're locked, you're locked out down there on Figueroa, because the bitch done, you know, swallowed them with her ass. But shout out to the Smoker Scan community there, and we having a good meeting today, and, um, y'all have a good.
This is 7255. Hello?
Yes, which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, number eight, public comment, and Smoker Scan, thank you for the support.
You'll have one minute for the item and one minute for general public comment.
Number eight, about the trucks. Funny how we reach out to try and get funding from truckers that are already paying for diesel fuel. Back in the day, we said it was, we ran diesel because it costs less to manufacture. But now, diesel's higher than gas, and we still, truckers get locked down to what they can charge or lose the contracts. But we'll go after them for clean fees. The city of LA got rid of the contractors, the services city of LA, even though they had debts to their trucks, $200,000 trucks, plus $200,000 trucks. But we got rid of them, let them do on their own livelihood. Who do we represent? The city of attorney? You guys seem to back up, not the people, not for the city, but the council people there. You tell us to stop talking or interrupt our conversation when we try and speak up against something-
You have one minute for general public comment.
That the public should be aware of. That's no, I haven't even finished on number eight. Okay, let's go to public comment. You need to, Padilla, thank you for backing me up and getting Starbucks at 90/80 to go through the public work system. So now they're gonna, they were boarding it up, got rid of the homeless encampment that's been there for three months, since I've been reporting it, now that they're gonna open up 90/20 and have an open house there, or whatever you have. Again, it only takes a camera, it's Juan Monica Rodriguez. It only took you that, seven years to get to La Tuna Canyon after there's Channel 5. Beautiful debate they had on the news there, about if it was in front of your house, it wouldn't have took seven years. But it seems to be the cameras moved the people. Again, the Clean Act on the truckers, terrible that you're finding money out of them, because at the end it cost them, or their contracts. That police officer should be fired, arrested for insulting a man in Hank-
Yeah, hi, danielgust.substack.com, all items and general public comment.
You'll have three minutes for item six through nine and one minute for general public comment.
Yeah, okay, so item eight. Item eight is a type of environmental thing that may or may not be connected to the South Coast Air Quality Management District, which should be looked at with great skepticism every time one thing like this comes up. Why? Because it's the dumping ground for all of your spouses, your wayward nieces and nephews, and other people connected to your families and connected to their families who somehow can't get jobs in the private sector. For example, I exclusively uncovered a few years ago that Herb Wesson's wife, this is why you can't trust anything that may be connected, as this item is, to the AQMD. Herb Wesson's wife lied about her education, she didn't have a bachelor's degree, and got a six-figure job at the AQMD, replacing a PhD who's a professor at UCLA.
Speaker, you should move on to your next item.
Why? Okay, well, you can extend it to the lawsuit for, to the lawsuit thing with Purdue Pharma, because this is a type of political environment where spouses and kids can lie about their connections and qualifications, because, for example, as I referenced in the prior email, Fabian Wesson lied about her education, got a job at the AQMD in the prior comment that I made, because the entity was run by Bill Burke, who's married Yvonne Braithwaite Burke, who was Herb Wesson's first boss. So the Purdue Pharma settlement, or the Purdue Pharma case, should be looked at with scrutiny until you can say with clear transparency that these are legitimate, not biased, and that you don't have any public interest in it, like Curran Price lied about, like Jose Rizor lied about.
Speaker, you should move on to your next-
And on down the road. You know what, I'll go to general public comment, because that's why you guys cheated me out of time the other day.
You'll have one minute.
On danielgust.substack.com this morning, I have a doozy of a story about a meltdown at the Animal Services Commission on July, what was it, July 23rd, when a guy who didn't want to be commission president was made commission president through the manipulative arm twisting of Jackie Hamilton, who's Karen Bass's right-hand person. And I know Jackie's aware of it, and Carolyn Maseas DeWebb is aware of it. This person may get the city sued, because he had a meltdown, a tantrum at a meeting, because it seems like the city may be trying to misuse donated funds to find a way to kill hundreds of healthy, adoptable animals without making Karen Bass look bad, because they are being dumped in the streets, Mr. Harris-Darson-
Yes, good morning, good morning. I'd like to speak on all items and public comment.
You'll have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Thank you, and please don't interrupt. You know, item eight, you know, it's amazing that we all have a chance to talk on all items, and then when I listen to the people from Smoker Scan, one of them starts and he sounds like, boy, he's really gonna stay on topic, and then the other one goes to Figueroa. You know, they should be ashamed of themselves. They have so much to give the city, and what do they do?
Speaker, you need to speak to the agenda items now. You can speak to that in your general public comment.
Ma'am, I am talking about item eight, you allow the gentleman talks about Figueroa. Why do you always let the black individual talk about filth and scum all the time? You always do that, ma'am. You always allow that, all right? Can I continue with items? To be able to speak on them, ma'am? May I? Give me yes or no?
Speaker, your time is running.
Or do I go on to public comment, ma'am? Yes, thank you. I will go to public comment. I want to apologize to Sergeant Clark and the other, Duarte and all the other officers for my behavior last month's way, and I was assaulted, I was confronted by one of those protesters who are there to, you know, save the world, but yet who bring disgrace to our city and have no honor for this country. So I apologize for that, and I'm glad that you folks fooled item 25 about security, because God forbid, Mr. Trump wins and then he'll bring his mercenaries in, but LAPD can take care of us, and that's why next week I'll be back, because I know I will be safe with LAPD there, and so again, I apologize for my outburst, and I'll try not to do that again. But once you start a fight, like Smoker Scan said, you better be willing to finish it. Thank you.
I will mention with great pride how deeply moved we all were to see Paul Kukorian at the torch lighting, and also at the Simone Biles victory party, and certainly at the Leon Marchand, who is the greatest French swimmer ever possibly, and a very good swimmer in his own right. But we're all very upset that the world record, nobody's getting world records in the pool because the pool is too shallow. This is a great oversight. The French were trying to cut corners, and they made a shallow pool. So now, even the great Katie Ledecky, who won, is not able to, how much is Kukorian gonna spend for the total three weeks that he's over there? And did he go first class, Isagiri? Let's make that a PRA, for all of the travel documents for the great council president. This is the longest council president trip.
Caller with the last four digits, 5554, please state the items you would like to speak to.
Yes, good morning. Six, seven, and eight, and general public comments.
You'll have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Yeah, item number six, I'm for. Item number eight, I'm for. Item number seven, yes, I don't, I'm against the movie, I'm against that item. General public comment.
Sir.
General public comment.
Okay, you have one minute.
Yeah, Marquis Harris-Darson's the president, I am happy. Kukorian should get out. He's, he's, he gave me some problems when I was at city council. I'm, I'll be back at city council next week. He's, Kukorian's full of crap, thank you.
Call in user five, please unmute yourself and state the items you'd like to speak to.
Okay, only, only humans are allowed to speak here, so, next speaker. Now we can move to public comment, is that right?
Mr. President, we could vote, the council may vote on item number 10 before public comment. Oh, yes, never mind, we could move on to public comment.
Okay. All right, if you could read the instructions in for public comment.
As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252, induce meeting ID number 1605358466, and then press pound.
We will hear anyone who wishes to speak. I know you had some creative names that you put on there, Mr. Spindler, but I'm not gonna read them.
I'll take the two minutes, I'm entitled to, thank you. So you already voted for item 10, but I think that sanitary sewer purposes are always worthy of putting on the agenda. Quite some years ago, Dr. Drew expressed on one of his shows, great concern about the sewage infrastructure in LA, and I think it would be a good thing for council to maybe even consult that and look into what else we can do to make sure we're giving our sewer system the attention and resources it deserves, especially if we plan on building a bunch of density really aggressively. We want to make sure our sewers can withstand that, because the streets already kind of stink a lot, the sewage already gets backed up. So I'll move on to these ballot measures, which is a lot for only 60 seconds. And for the record, I was waiting with my hand raised on the phone before, so you kind of robbed me of my chance to talk about the Dolby Theater and to sing to you also, but whatever. I, I think it's interesting that the council has authority- I, I think it's interesting that the council has authority to sort of codify what goes on the ballot. I think that fewer municipalities should have a say once thresholds are met for ballot qualification. I don't think the city governance should be involved. People should look into what happened in Burlington a while back. It was a disgrace. People got thousands of signatures and then the council voted and said, yeah, we're not going to put that on the ballot anyway. I wouldn't expect our body to act any better, but I don't think there's anything here. They have a distinct interest in blocking. But I will say, I wish we had more time to be thoughtful on this and I think Kevin DeLeon is a racist asshole who should resign and fuck you, Kevin.
Okay, next speaker.
Hi, I'm Donald Harland. I want to speak on agenda items 10 and 11.
You'll have two minutes.
Hi, I'm Donald Harland. Agenda item number 10 is a right-of-way for a sewer, 3600 Primavero Avenue. Quit claim. Nobody needs to give a quit claim to build the sewer. Nobody needs to claim property to build the sewer. They can just build the sewer. The in-city engineer needs to be investigated for illegally developing real estate and stealing utilities, hooking up, the city engineer also needs to be investigated for hooking up utilities for unlawfully developed real estate. And the city engineer needs to be investigated for hooking up utilities to illegally develop real estate.
Speaker, that's not relevant to the agenda item before you.
Number 10. Number 11, agenda item 11. Order and letter designation requests for the ballot measures for the California general election. Just to make it clear for the people working in the city, it doesn't matter what the state of California thinks about your ballots. Trying to send your charter amendments or your redistricting to the state of California doesn't mean shit. They don't decide any of that. I decide that. There's nobody in the state of California to send this to to get your shit through that's illegal. Nobody in the city here has authority to amend charters as if you ever had one. And nobody in the city here should be working on ethics because you guys are so corrupt, it seems a shame that you should be spending money working on ethics.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
Item 10 and item 11, please.
You'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Item 10, I'm not really good at legal language, so I'm not sure if this is to decide whether or not to go through with or reject or reject someone's proposal to back out of, I don't know. But it involves sewer, I guess, systems, I don't know. It just smelled like shit everywhere. I spent a lot of time in Reseda. I try to come over on this side of the hill, you know, whenever I can because I love, I love this side of the hill, you know, it's always going to have my heart. But it smells like shit everywhere now and it really sucks because I know people that grew up here and a lot of them haven't even been anywhere outside the city before. A lot of them haven't even been on a plane. They don't really know that, you know, other places don't smell like shit everywhere. And it's kind of a shame that they think that some neighborhoods just get to smell nice and some just don't. So that's a fucking, really, really fucking travesty because it's a beautiful city. Item number 11. The first thing we should have did when those leaks happens was reverse the districts, the redistricting. I don't understand how we can say that that was a problem, it was all done wrong, we're going to do reforms, come up with a commission, all that stuff. Why don't we just turn the changes back first, undo the damage and then go from there? Instead, we spent hours upon hours upon hours, listened to those stupid fucking meetings, even though there were no phone comments, the ad hoc governance reform committee. And a lot of bullshit was said. Not a lot talked about reducing salaries, although we're going to have a bigger council but with no pay cuts. That's kind of interesting. And we really kicked the fucking football down as far as we could so y'all don't have to deal with it, which is really sad. So y'all pathetic, you support the apartheid state of Israel as declared by U.N. Security Council. And so I think if you want to do some ethics reform, maybe we could stop supporting apartheid states. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Fuck Israel.
Next speaker.
I would like to speak on everything you allow me.
You'll have two minutes for items 10 and 11.
So for the number 10, I just looked up on that property on Google, so I want to specifically directly speak to our council member Hernandez, which is my favorite woman in the world. I am not allowed to play in the park, to play basketball, to play soccer in her council district because every time I step in into the court, those kids kick me out because I'm not good at basketball. I cannot participate there.
Speaker, you're not on topic for agenda item number 10.
Yes, I am, I am. This is, I'm talking about the property right here. And then I, because I am not allowed to go to their park, I actually play soccer, play basketball myself in this vacated property right here. But right now, our city wants to take that away from me and then build a sanitary sewer. I just want to know that where can I play soccer? Where can I play basketball? Because if I go back to the park, I will continue to receive bullying, which is the city never care. Number 11. Number 11, I specifically want to talk about the letter F, the pensions. I have seen so many officers are on the force, specifically LAPD on the force, they're supposed to be retired now. They wanted to retire right now, but they cannot because their pension is too low. They're, they have dedicated 20 years, 25 years, 30 years of the service on the job and they still cannot retire because they do not have a pension system that allows them to retire, to travel, to have fun. So numerous times I have seen those officers are working so tired each day because they have to work so many overtime because the salary, the pension does not even able to support their own family. That's not acceptable.
All right, I believe it's our last speaker, is that right? So Mr. Spindler, you're batting cleanup.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
All the fucking items.
You'll have two minutes.
So CD1, good. UNISUS getting rid of shit out of our district. Let's give our hand. Very good. See, UNISUS found a way to take all of the drug needles, shit, piss, and all the bags of coke and transport them over private property using this quit claim deed. In fact, UNISUS is the first councilwoman to ever have an uphill sewer easement, putting the sewer shit up instead of down over there in Glassell Park so the developers can keep paying off the building inspectors and building all this dangerous housing on the side of the hills. So one day Marquisie can watch it slide down the hill and open up the FBI investigation. That's what Marquisie will do. He'll go, well, I was the chair of parliament. I told you not to approve those houses.
Speaker, you're off topic.
I told you, I told you it's dangerous. See, it's on topic, dum-dum, because put the sewer easement first.
You should move on to your next item.
You're so stupid. I don't, where do you get this DEI hire? God, man. Number 11, what do we got here? Sorry, Buckethead. Your little police chief authority to terminate was terminated by Marquisie. You should take G off. Charlie Buckethead, poor little Pat McOscar Timothy, he got his ass kicked on that boat because Marquisie shafted your ass. And then he was joined unbelievably by Hugo Stalin. Yes, Hugo doesn't want to fire cops. He loves cops. Imelda loves cops. Even UNISUS, who studied to be a cop, deep down loves cops. You don't want to fire cops. You like bad cops. Wayne from Encino loves bad cops. So let's keep the bad cops on the department.
Okay, that concludes public comment from the special agenda. Mercifully, that is concluded. So now we will, what's that? Oh, we have a couple of phone calls. Let's go to the phones.
Wonderful. This is Richard Serrano. I'm glad you don't like the public comment, Mr. Bloomingfield.
Which items would you like to speak to, Speaker?
But this is what you're supposed to accept, public comment. 10 and 11.
You'll have two minutes.
It makes no difference. You already made up your minds and, hello?
You have two minutes.
10 and 11. Okay, if you can stop talking, we can talk. Bloomingfield again, wonderful. We are number 10, sewer lines. Water and power is making bigger sewer lines. Yeah, you need the space and the properties. We're about to put a light rail down Pacoima to the Civic Center in Van Nuys. All that infrastructure should be done to save the city money before you start laying out the stuff. I know you guys just do what you do and accept what the contractors do because you've never done the work. But if you're going to put this new 40-inch from the 20-inch lines, you should be, go ahead and do it now to save the city time money because when you get your potholes and it starts sinking sinkholes is because the infrastructure wasn't done correctly. No compacting, no nothing. We're cutting in and just putting asphalt over the top instead of compacting it correctly to make it from.
Speaker, you should move on to your next item.
What we're doing, we're welding all this. It's not a minute, ma'am, but okay, I will. Number 11. LAPD being on the budget thing, I'd rather pay LAPD officers a lot more money, let them make them work 410s, a lot more money to keep them with family, with their family and not create the situation you have. You got this on the ballot. You know that to be a fireman, they say, if you meet the requirements, apply. To be an LAPD officer, just have a, you know, just a heartbeat, show up. We need the people. We need the numbers. DEI kind of situation. So when you get that kind of officer out there.
Speaker, what items would you like to speak on?
Okay, Mr. Spindler, no animals are allowed. Next caller. Okay. And no shouting out from, from the audience. Sure, first and only warning. Okay, does that conclude on phone calls? Public comment by teleconference? Okay, that's the last caller. Public comment is now exhausted both in person and virtually.